Okay, let's call me in order. What do you mean? Why do we need to do the black? Comments from the public? Any comments from board members?
We want to end the episode.
Um, you know, let me jump in because it's a joint meeting, right?
Yes.
I'll consider myself one of the board members. I went through the registrar's budget. Uh, today. And. Based on the request. And, uh. I went through every line item and see what they're using, what they're not using. And I kind of right sized certain budgets that were not right sized, uh, certain line items. And zeroed out a few that they're just not using and there was money in. Bottom line. Is. We could hire two deputies. If we add $2,300 to that budget and each deputy would be paid $2,500. For the fiscal 24. By adding $2,300 to the budget. By kind of moving numbers around and not shortchanging any particular line item in here. Uh, in fact, adding money to some line items that they've been overspending and others that they weren't spending at all. So kind of moving money around. So $2,300 gets you two deputies at 2,500 each. And then maybe over the course of two years, two fiscal years. Get those deputies if we think they should be at 5,000 over the course of two fiscal years, less of an impact. As for the registrar's pay. You know, it's all over now. Um. I think old line, smaller town pays more. Clinton, bigger town pays less. Uh, so there's a little bit, you know, I think we pay barely. I'm not saying they shouldn't be at 30,000, you know, or but they're not. That's not what these positions are paid. Um, adding, I think, a thousand dollars to each registrar. You know, probably is okay. Gets them to about 13. I forget whether they're at 12.7 or 12.2. But it gets them into 13, you know, into the 13,000 range, which I think puts them probably about where they should arrange the cheap or the pay that they should be. Per town or size, um, with the amount of orders we have. So that would be a total increase of that budget of $4,300, $4,300 this year. Which gets you higher pay for the registrars and two deputies at $2,500. It's a thought, it's a thought. And and maybe over the course of two fiscal years. And see where that goes. Yeah, of course.
Well, they have an odd year to those. The election's every other year, isn't it?
So in years where there's a presidential, well, no, there's an election every year.
Every year, 1,500.
Yes, for those in politics, there's an election every year. The municipals are odd years and congressional is every two. Uh, the state is every two. And, you know, presidential is four and.
So they have the same. So there's literally an election every year.
There's an election every year. Um, so. Uh, in presidentials, you're definitely going to spend more. Um, and, uh, 25 will be a presidential. I wouldn't worry about the presidential years. If they're an outlier every four years, let them run over by 4,000. If if they have to. Or. Attack it incrementally, but it's a suggestion.
Um, it was unclear to me exactly what they asked was.
I agree with you.
So so to me, if if part time 2,500 was what gets them what they wanted in the way of deputies. Sounded to me as if the deputy, they're they're looking effectively be training somebody to come in and be. So it seemed like that would be more time, I guess, but I I can't say I know one way or the other.
Um, it might be, it might be a little bit more time, it might not be, um. I can't do anything about where they work, okay? Okay, they work in Joan Strickland is right, it's a small office. Sorry, I mean.
If you get covered, don't they do every other day?
I don't know how often they're in, they may not be in some days.
Mondays and Fridays.
Yeah, right. Yeah, they're already, huh? They all, they all work. They do, oh, yeah, they alternate. Some days they're in there at the same time, I've been there where they're in the same time. You know, uh, during COVID, certainly they were, um. But it gets. First of all, they have to find somebody who wants to be a deputy and it does get people kind of hopefully interested. I mean, that was one of the points you Joan Strickland was making. You know, and and Joan Broadhurst is, um, of an age that is a little bit older than Joan Strickland. So they're not wrong, um. We're really glad that that's what we got. Yeah, but are we, question, are we being penny wise and pound foolish based upon the years that they have and trying to make sure that they stay at least until somebody's. Properly trained, I mean, we're talking what, 1,000 each? That's, well, so I'm sorry, I don't understand where you're going with that. If you're going to increase their pay by a thousand dollars each. Is that appropriate based upon the fact of their years of experience and how many hours do they actually put in? And how do we equate to how many hours a deputy? All we go by is what registrars would pay. Okay, I I think it's, it is not a merit based system. None of this is, um, they're both highly qualified, okay? So, um, we're lucky in that respect. Uh, there is, there are other training opportunities, so I think to your point. I think if you said, hey, I want to be a deputy. Carol Conklin could probably steer people. She's a regional election monitor. She could probably steer people to training sessions for registrars. So it wouldn't fall only to Joan and Joan. I I'm suggesting a model to start it in 2024. Maybe add to it a little bit in 2025. Get some interest. I think it is smart to have somebody ready to go. I don't think that's a bad idea. And I think you can do it at the right cost.
And are they elected every two years or are they now in a four year term?
I wish I knew the answer, I forget. I just forgot, I remember everything else, but I have all the other elected positions.
I I like your idea.
Larry, do you know? You're a deputy.
I was. Sorry, he's no longer living. Yeah, because one of the deputy has to live in town. Yeah, so, um.
Can't use this address.
The, uh.
He was that one.
Well, anyway, uh. The, I believe they're elected on the same cycle as all the rest of the, all the rest of the town officials.
So my, my point was, I like the idea of. Setting a target out there, not necessarily hitting it in the first year, but letting people know this is the direction we're going. And so that would encourage more, more interest. So I I liked the way I hear describing.
So I. I went through this today, I sent it to Leanne, she'll put it in the budget, you guys can look at it at a later date. We don't have to dwell on it right now, I just wanted to know. You might want to bring them in and talk to them together to get their feeling of that, because they they weren't very clear. But if you propose what you want to do, you get a feel for. I may or may not, may or may not make either or both of them happy with that proposal. Um, I, Joan Broadhurst was in today. And I did it today, so I did talk to her and I will talk to Joan Strickland. I know Joan Strickland, she's, she's going to be fine. She's going to see, I believe Joan Strickland will say, well, as long as it's being addressed, I'm good with it. She may not agree with the amount of pay for her. But I believe that is the right amount and I really, I don't think it, and if we go up another thousand extra, I mean. They're not paid a lot of money. No, it's not. It's in these small, there is not. So. Again, proposal, we don't need this proposal, put it on the table, we'll go from there.
Any other comments for board members?
I've talked about this before, institutional memory. And we have one of our departments where the institutional memory is. Not there right now, but in fact, with the two registered voters, we're important to keep the institutional memory also. So if we can keep the two registered voters. With us for at least another year or two and then subsidize their institutional memory by bringing a couple more people in. I think when the time comes for transition, it makes it easy for the town.
There are, news and family services? Heather? Turn around.
Hello. Hello. Good evening. Um. Leanne was going to switch us out, so. Can you hear me?
Bad connection, you're breaking up a little bit. We had this the other day, there are 2,000.
Um, Sue Consoli was going to go first.
Okay, that's better so far. Very soon.
Hi, how are you?
Very well.
And I'm hoping you can hear me okay?
Yeah.
All right. So I don't know if you have those slides up in front of you or you have the, um. Copies of that. Okay. All right, so I can walk you through that. Am I going to read it to you because I know you're able to do that, I'm just going to kind of walk you through it. Um, if you look at the budget overview, um, here, I'll skip straight to that, we don't need the table of contents really. And I won't keep you long, so if we go to the budget overview, yeah, that slide right there. So if you take a look at that, um, you can see that operations have remained absolutely flat. Um, and included in operations are, um, income that I need to be able to help somebody out. Say, for instance, they need gas to get to their job, um, and they ran out or they're out of food in an emergency. Or need an antibiotic, something like that, so, um, I I'll get to that when I get to cost containment. But you'll notice that the operations line has remained completely flat. Because I have been able to keep supplementing with other grants and I've not asked you for anything more. Um, in quite a few years, um, so that's actually worked out really well. Um, I'd also like you to take a look at the total budget. Uh, because you will notice that the salaries are going up and it looks like a big percentage there, it's really not. Because, um, the salaries are going up, a small part of that is going up anyway, which I have no control over. That's, um, you know, just the cost of living increases and whatnot that happens yearly. Um, and. Um. The benefits, same thing, don't really have any control over that part. Um, but I'd like you to take a look at the total budget, uh, before you kind of go, wow, what's that, what's going on there? Because, um, if you look at 22. And and you look at what the total budget was in 22 and then look at what the total budget was in 23. And in, and now what I'm asking in 24. So part of that happened because I got old. And I got off all of your medical benefits, so that was actually a huge savings to the town. Um, so also that in that other year, I had some intern help, which I no longer have. Which also decreased some of the need I had for the assistant hour. So I I try to really work very leanly with my budget. And, um, you know, not put a burden on the town. So I just wanted to kind of point that out as we move forward, since I am asking for a small amount this year. And if we can move to the next slide. So on the next slide, um, you'll see that this, you know, basically the salary budget, um, is the the large portion of what is constitute social services budget. We are service oriented, that is what we do, it's man hours. Um, and you'll see the benefits are representing only 7% of the budget now. And just so that you know what I saved you by getting old, that that was actually 20% before. So, um. So, um, that helped quite a bit, uh, to leave more money in the total budget. Um, and, um, the full time hours have remained the same, I haven't asked you for more hours, keeping the same hours. Um, the part time assistant hours were increasing to 18 hours. And the reason that we're doing that is because it's absolutely necessary to have those hours. Um, and and not to kind of toot my own horn continually here with how I saved you on medical. But I also ate six vacation days this past year. Because the nature of this work is it just needs to get done when it needs to get done. And we just need more assistant hours to be able to do that.
You can blame me, sir. You can blame. You can blame me for that.
Yeah, well, I did ask Carl if it was possible and, you know, I don't want to rock the boat with how that works for everybody else. But the the truth of the matter is, we just need more assistant hours because I really don't want that to happen again this year. Um, it'd be real nice if I could actually take a vacation. So, um, you know, I'm very dedicated to my job and and the nature of this job is that folks need to be helped when they need to be helped. It's not like I can say, I'm sorry, you don't have any food, but, you know, uh, there's nobody here to help you, so. Um, and I take that to heart. So you'll see that the salary budget does have an increase and I did break it down as to how much of that's actually an increase that I'm asking for, which is 4,000. For the part time assistant hours. Um, and I'm, the rest of that little increase is actually, like I said, I don't have any control over, that would be inflation. Pretty much. Um, if we can go to the next slide. So the accomplishments that we've had are are kind of ongoing, you've seen some of these before. There are over 33 programs just with the state of Connecticut. Um, and I don't need to tell you what government applications look like, I mean, we're all looking at our taxes now. That kind of is what an application looks like, just one that I have to help people with. Uh, it's pretty daunting and very time consuming. Uh, and oftentimes we have to correct something, um, or send in some sort of proof of something also. So there's a lot of programs that we're handling, um, and. Programs have increased from the state. Um, just recently, we have CT Home, uh, we have Unite CT, went away, now it's coming back. Um, it's a lot to stay on top of and constantly be helping people out with, but we are doing that and we are managing. Um, and again, with just that, a little bit of extra hours that we're asking for so that we can keep up with, um, just the regular stuff that's on the table, never mind. The new stuff, this just, all the stuff that I I have to deal with every day. Um, if we can go to the next slide. Cost containment, um. Just to give you kind of an overview. So cost containment happens a lot of ways, we do social service help day and I do that on purpose. Because if we can get providers from the state to come down and, um, help us out. So for instance, if I can get somebody from Internet Essentials, I've got Husky Health in there. Somebody's doing an application for the health insurance, that's just saved me an hour's worth of work just on that one person. Um, and, you know, you multiply that and we do that once a month, um, it's saving a lot of man hours. Because I'm trying to work efficiently with other service providers that I can get to to help us out. We're also providing the Connecticut, um, food share truck during that time period, which also helps cost containment. Because I don't have to be helping somebody out with food if they're able to get it, um, at the truck. Um, also, um, we're working on, I work with, um, the workforce alliance with the state. And we do have a job fair already, um, scheduled for the spring on May 4th. Um, I've also been working on getting information out, uh, we have a Facebook page, I get information out about jobs recently. Lee Company just announced that they're hiring 60 positions. Access Health, uh, announced today that they are going to be hiring and actually training for the insurance, um, exam. Uh, and helping find people jobs, so there's so, um, as the job market stuff is opening up, where I'm staying on top of it. Because our goal in social services is not to just help folks out, you know, kind of just handing them something. But to actually help them get into better position so they don't need us, our job is to not be needed. Um, so that's what we're working on, uh, jobs is the first thing that we need to really address with folks, um, that are underemployed. So that they can get off state services, don't need us to fill out forms and can can start being, um. Self, um, efficient, self, have support self advocacy for them. Um, in the meantime, we will do work on all of these state programs, the energy assistance program. Uh, we've been bringing in about $120,000 a year. Into, into town in heating assistance dollars by the applications we do just for that one program. This year it's going to be, uh, it's going to be higher when you see this slide next year and I get the numbers back. Because, um, we've had quite an increase in folks applying for that program this year, as as you all know. Um, heating, uh, has gone through the roof. Um. And, uh, we brought in quite a bit of money through Unite CT, also doing those applications. Uh, we'd have, we hosted the bus, but in hosting the bus, you also had to help do the apps. And help get the people registered, so we did that again at social service help day, so it didn't take additional hours, um, during our day. And we worked with the state folks that were there. Um, and, um, that large number in grant assistance that that's, that's been procured over the past 10 years. Which has kept our budget for the items that I was telling you when we need to help somebody, like if I help somebody. Um. They're going to be able to get a job tomorrow and they need work boots and they need whatever it is. That's where that 11,000 comes in, where I can just, I have some funds, I can help somebody directly. Um, to get where they need to be. Um, the reality is, it's, it's costs a lot more than that because we have 2,250 people on state aid right now. And that doesn't count energy assistance. Because energy assistance is a separate program that works off 60% median income. And we've got quite a few extra folks on top of that number on that. So, um, it does take quite a bit, right now, we're, you know, we've got heating crises, you know, coming up pretty regularly. Um. And we're dealing with all of that, so there's a lot of cost containment that happens because I'm constantly looking for ways. For us not to have to use the towns dollars. I try to find the federal and state dollars and any program, uh, money that I can find to bring into the town to help us. And we go to the next slide. So on the next slide, uh, just kind of recapping what we just talked about, uh, with the budget, uh, increase that's in there. Uh, for the salary increase predominantly. Which is actually 4,000 because the rest of that, like I said, is the inflation I have no control over. Uh, and, um, that kind of brings that number down quite a bit, you could see I'm not asking for a whole lot. Uh, and the, um, just to kind of give you a side note. Um, I did kind of some quick math to take a look at it, the social, number of social service clients is needing services that we're working with. Has increased by about 10% over last year. And the, uh, energy applications that we're seeing, um, the state is up more than double and behind on all of them. Um, we're up easily 30%, probably a little bit more, but we're still taking them. I mean, there's, those energy applications are still coming in as people run out of, um, dollars to keep up with what's going on. Uh, it's a good thing, it's been a really nice kind of warm winter. Um, there's no other major expenditures coming up and our operating expenses again are expected to remain flat. Um, so that's really all I'm asking for, those additional, um, 4,000 really for that. Uh, for that extra assistant hours, so I can take a vacation. And, and, uh. Hopefully that all works out really well, uh, are there any questions?
Sure, this is Tom. How many hours, how long does it take to handle one person that comes into your office based on hours?
So it depends on the person, if they're elderly, don't understand things or have a disability, which a lot of our folks do, those take longer. But just to give you a basic idea, one government application generally takes about an hour worth of work. You have to fill out all the paperwork, just for instance, a food stamp application, that's 36 pages. And then on top of the 36 pages, you also have to, um, provide substantiating documents. Um, like, um. Four weeks worth of wages, um, you have to provide, um. You know, how much money you have in the bank, and I could go on and on, so, um, when we're doing it on. Paper or online, it doesn't really matter, you still have to provide all of those things. Upload them, the person will forget something, they have to go home, they have to bring it back. You know, adds to time, but generally speaking, about an hour per application.
That does not include the processing on your part after the fact, correct?
No, and it doesn't, also doesn't include, I forgot my electric bill. And, you know, I'm going to give it to you two weeks from now and then I'm doing something else then, no, it doesn't count. But, but we make it work.
How how frequently do you get called out after normal business hours?
Uh, that does happen when I have police calls, Heather takes some police calls as well. Um, so I have built into my budget, um, is $700 for overtime pay. And I'm happy to say that there, uh, the year before, I actually only spent, I think it was $343 of that. Um, and again, with the assistant hours being there, that's helpful because I am paid at a much higher rate than the assistant is being paid. So if I have more assistant hours and those things get done during the day, there is less likely to be an emergency later on after hours. Because we, the assistant hours are there to help me get that done and not run out of time. So that's also helpful.
So, uh, this is John, you mentioned there were 2,250 people on state aid.
Mm-hmm.
Had a major increase from last year?
It is an increase, I'm not going to say it's a major increase, we kind of had the, the most major increase we had was from 2019 into 2020. Which was when COVID started. Uh, but yes, we're in, we're getting about 100 to 200, um, family increase, uh, that number is actually individuals. Um, so there may be a little less on the families, um. But nonetheless, we're having to handle all of those, so for instance, an access health application. That's like, you know, if I do one access help application for somebody, there might be a child that's on Husky. There might be a parent that's on their employer one, there might be another parent that's on, um, the access health subsidized, um. What they call Obamacare plan. Um, there may be another child that's on, you know, another type of insurance, it's, it's really kind of crazy. I don't have to tell you that government is crazy, that's what I deal with, so it, there's a lot of. There's just a lot of stuff.
Thank you. So.
Just a contextual question, when we talk about the increase in hours to 18 hours, that's an increase from what?
So that's going to be an unclear area, I'm going to honestly tell you that what happened was that I did have some, um, internship hours. My budget hours got decreased without me realizing, they were decreased based on the actual of what we had used because I saved money. And in government, when you save money, then it's not there for the following year. Um, when I, so actually it's not an increase, but it's an increase in the budget because it was taken out. It's actually back to where it was.
Okay, thank you. So, Susan, question for you, trick's one, you're, when your energy assistance, based upon previous years, knowing that we've had such a warm. Beginning or pretty much halfway through the winter here. Do you anticipate that still taking off higher? Um, do you get a big influx when, when the cold really settles in or do, do you find people actually plan for it ahead of time?
So people in general don't plan for things ahead of time, um, that's one of the things we work with on our clients. And I don't like always sticking my finger in the hole in the dyke, I like to do some prevention on that. So I am actually working right now and putting together some budgeting workshops for folks so that they can start doing some better pre-planning. Because, well, partly you can't plan and I'm, I'm just using the electric bills, you know, they went up 47%. So if I'm a senior and I'm on a fixed income, how do I plan for that? I didn't plan for the bill to go up that much, no one knew inflation was going to take off this way. We didn't know we were going to have a war. We didn't know we were gonna have a war and natural gas is gonna cost a lot of money to make electricity. So um, some of these things couldn't be anticipated and now they have to be dealt with. But um, other things can be anticipated. You always need a certain amount of oil, you know, you didn't anticipate the price of it. And I hear that's going up again, by the way. Um, so I, you know, we do try to help people budget and yes, they need to be planning on all of these things, but the programs um, the programs have been used more this year than ever because people got caught short and they didn't know what to do and they did qualify being at sixty percent median income. And and so we had to help them out with that.
Um, just quickly, Sue, I know you said to qualify John's question that there are twenty-two hundred and fifty people in Old Sabre County State Assistance.
Mm-hmm.
And I I know you're busy. I'm not, this is not meant to diminish that, but that doesn't mean twenty-two hundred and fifty people are coming to social services. That's a statistic that you access.
Yes, but most of those people have gotten their services through our office, whether directly or inadvertently. So directly they're taking up direct service hours. Inadvertently, I'm explaining to people, you can go online and do that application yourself. I'm putting all that information into um Events Magazine. I'm trying to redirect people to do more of this on their own. And that's another focus of mine this year because as the state has moved a lot of applications online, that's possible. And then I just have to get over the digital divide of folks not knowing how to do it, but but I'm trying to get them more to do a lot more of their own stuff. Um, the reality is, so you're right, not all of them are gonna come into the office. Um, but of the ones who do, what you also have to know about that number is we don't touch them once a year, probably about three times a year. There's an energy assistance that's in the fall. We've got them coming in for Warm the Children apps. We've got them coming in for food stamps. We've got them coming in to renew their health policies. So we're not just seeing that person once and doing an application for an hour. Usually we see people three or four times a year of the ones that we are seeing.
Anybody else? Thank you, Susan.
Larry, could you see, speak a little bit louder or turn up the volume?
We can turn up the volume, yeah.
Heather, go ahead.
Yeah. Hi, can you hear me now? Can you hear me?
Can she tell her uh video and it might help that the signal?
That might be, yeah, Heather?
Yeah.
Could you try uh muting your video, see if it helps with the signal?
Sure. Okay, how's that?
Better.
Better.
Okay, I thought I was gonna have to call I T. Okay. All right, well, hello, everybody, and uh, thank you for this opportunity, uh, which I know you we have to be here, but uh, thank you anyway. And Sue, I just wanna um say, you know, even though she's saying that she's getting older, she still covers just as much ground as she always has. She's she's amazing. So I just wanna throw that out there. Um, if you can go to the next slide, please, Larry. So you'll see on this, and I I won't go into a lot of explanation because you've had this for a while, but the department budget is up two point eight five over fiscal year twenty-three, led again by contractual obligation and increases in salaries. Um, we are again, uh, similar to uh Sue's social service component, very service oriented. So most of our cost is related to our staffing. Next slide, please. So our revenue sources, as you all remember, we switched over to the general fund. Um, I think it might be two years ago now or more because of COVID, I have a bit of a time lapse in my brain. But the general fund budget for fiscal year twenty-four commits four hundred and sixty-eight thousand one hundred eighty-nine of the overall budget or seventy-six percent and grants and client fees support the balance of almost a hundred and fifty thousand. Surplus funds from our budget have been deposited in the income fund over the past four years and uh fifteen thousand of that was used in fiscal year twenty-three to augment the Youth and Family General Fund budget. Um, I just wanted to note at this part right here, uh licensed marriage and family therapies of which most of our staff are have that credentialing. We are gonna be eligible for Medicare billing starting in twenty twenty-four and that should make a significant uh difference in some of the client.
What changed, what changed that?
Next page, please.
Heather, Heather?
I'm sorry?
What changed that is allowing Medicare billing?
The L M F T um lobby has been pushing for that for at least a decade and we finally were just able to push it kind of over the hump at the legislative um level. Uh, so very strong lobbying. The social work lobby has owned Medicare for as long as um they've been around, I think, and they've always had a bigger, more vociferous lobby than M F Ts. Um, we're more introverted professionally, so um, I think I can speak to that. Um, so we're very glad that that change has happened.
Thank you.
So the agency, um, the staffing positions have not changed. They haven't experienced uh increases in the number of employees we've had. I've been here for thirteen years, uh, coming up on fourteen. So we have the same number of employees. Some of the hours have increased during that time. So as director, I have a forty-hour position. I'm also the municipal veterans representative, the A D A representative, and I provide emergency on-call services for the police department and social services. Susan and I are the ones who really carry the phone unless we're out of town or out of country. Um, the social services coordinator, I put them on here even though they're on a separate budget because that's part of my purview. Prevention program coordinator uh is thirty-seven point five and a licensed marriage and family therapist clinician position of thirty-seven point five. The part-time staff, one of those is also the assistant to social services on a separate budget. Um, the administrative assistant is thirty-four hours. The other licensed clinician is twenty-eight hours and I did include that we had gone through the ARPA request process and received another three hours time limited for that position and another two hours for the twenty-nine hour prevention program coordinator. Um, next slide, please. So department goals and objectives, I put the words reconnect, review and reengage. Yeah, that's really the state uh organization's theme uh for coming out of the pandemic. And so I thought that would be helpful in terms of um letting you know what we're working on and the direction that we're heading. So post-pandemic, you know, as as some of the constraints were lifted, we've been able to reconnect within the schools and within the community with smaller groups of students. And really, uh, the research is indicating that uh the action-oriented activities are what's uh most in demand right now. Getting kids outside where they can play and touch the ground and just interact with each other without a lot of rules um has been really healthy for them. We continue to meet with our peer prevention group. Um, currently we have seven high school students and two staff members down in D C at a national prevention conference and it's going really well. I got some pictures today. Um, we met with them through the pandemic virtually and now we meet with them about three times a month uh very consistently. We have anywhere from fifteen to twenty-two members um on alternating weeks. We've been doing an increased number of outreach uh to P T O meetings, P T A, early childhood council and trying to um reconnect and foster relationships with parents and caregivers at all different levels through all three schools. We've increased our involvement or maintained it really. And we've always had a strong involvement with civic organizations. We are involved with the Exchange Club of Old Sabre, Westbrook, the Lions, of course, who we worked with for the Starlight Festival and Social Services Help Day and um the Masons who provide our fundraising dinners for Shoreline Soup Kitchen and Pantries. On the right side there, knowing what kind of work we're going to be doing in the future requires that we're evalu- getting data and evaluating data on a fairly consistent basis when we can. COVID really didn't allow us to do that as much as we had previously, but we proposed uh through the ARPA um process uh with the superintendent of the schools to do a student survey that we were hoping to do this year, but the time was not not right. We're hoping to do it uh maybe later in two thousand twenty-three or early twenty twenty-four. In the meantime, however, we're using uh Monitoring the Future Survey, which is a national survey of high school students to be able to design pro- um programs and interventions for our town locally. Um, we obtained funding through ARPA for the survey administration, which we just did in December, which was a parent and caregiver survey, and we'll be rolling out the results of that very soon. Next slide, please. Oh, I'm sorry. Could you go back for a second, please? Um, one of the things I wanted to say about the survey was um for anyone who's been around town for a long time or or even Brad, you have kids that had gone through the system um previously, we used to do the search uh survey, which was the Search Institute survey. And you may remember the language, the asset developmental asset language. We decided to change to a different kind of survey that more closely aligned with grant-funded projects and that piece is important for what I'll talk about later. Next slide, please. Um, in the summer of twenty twenty-two, we were involved with training. Um, the Old Sabre Public School System at the high school has a program called LINK, which is really the school version of our Youth Action Council. And we knew that we wanted to get more involved with freshman orientation and and have LINK more involved with the Campazan program. It's been a really important transition to school program that uh Youth and Family has been running since, I think, two thousand and uh seven. Um, we trained our LINK and E three student mentors together for freshman orientation and Campazan. You'll see some pictures of that in a few slides. Our Early Childhood Council, which is an early intervention program that we facilitate that was originally funded through a grant uh from Middlesex United Way, but that we now host and organize. Organized a community program involving many other town departments, the library, park and rec, Goodwin Early Childhood and other community childcare providers. One of the biggest parts of our um program and how we use our staffing here is to supervise and train master level interns towards becoming uh mental health clinicians. And that requires a fair amount of time from our clinicians and myself. Um, we're all mental health supervisors as well. And we're very deeply embedded within all three schools to provide uh social emotional groups, socialization, conflict resolution, individual case supports. And one of the great things about it, I think, is we bridge the gap between the school year and the summer and we provide services all year round. And we also provide coordination of care and family therapy. Um, our staff is always requested to be at uh wellness days within schools and I think last year we did three uh at the middle school level to promote resilience, empathy and understanding. And we run a drop-in uh, it went from one time per week last year to now three times per week and it's actively well-attended. Next slide, please. So department health, uh, I'm sorry, department accomplishments. Um, mental health services, we provided uh just under one thousand clinical sessions during twenty twenty-two. Our student support contacts and to do this, I calculated our in-school services um as well as our um, so that would be October to June. September were available, but they don't really utilize us that much as the school year begins. So five hundred individual contacts during the academic year, which is really, I think, significant. We've increased our professional development for clinical staff and evidence-based treatment approaches and telehealth certification. We do still offer telehealth because as people um accessed us during COVID where they may not have previously, they they wanted to maintain that connection and we've allowed that. Um, as I said, we oversee the training of our interns. Our full-time clinician, um, and in addition to myself, I'm an A M F T approved supervisor. He's a candidate. He'll be done with that training and certification in eight months. And why is that important? It allows us to attract um hi- a higher level, I think, of interns who want to come to this location for their training. Um, which helps provide services, increase services to the town at no additional cost. And we are consistently involved in collaborative programming in Middlesex Region and along the shoreline in the fu- those uh topics that you can read there for yourself. And I did wanna thank Matt and Carl for attending the Legislative Breakfast um, January third. That was something that um we were instrumental in helping plan and host down at the pavilion. Um, next slide, please.
Heather, Heather question. Um, so I see just under one thousand clinical sessions during calendar year twenty twenty-two. Uh, can you tell me how that um compares to twenty-one, twenty, nineteen? Uh, and what you're seeing halfway through uh, well, yeah, no, twenty, no.
So in twenty twenty, in twenty twenty, the number was a little bit lower. It might have been nine sixty-seven. And we had gone during COVID, we had gone from all in person to all telehealth. So we experienced a a bit of a dip in that. Then in twenty twenty-one, there was an increase uh to just over a thousand. I think it was a one thousand one hundred and eleven. Um, and then currently what we're seeing now is there's an increased need again. Um, so I do anticipate that this number you'll see um will increase when I report next year.
Okay, thank you. Heather, could I ask a question?
Of course.
This is John. You say there are five hundred individual contacts with students, is that correct?
Yes.
Uh, that's about fifty percent of the student body. Is that mostly a drug issue?
I don't think that's five hundred different people. That's five hundred.
Sorry, did you say that part again?
You said there are five hundred individual contacts during the academic year. I'm asking if that's five hundred students and if it is, it's fifty percent of the student body, which I find to be pretty high. And if it is true, I'd like to know if if it's mainly a drug issue that they're coming to seek advice and help.
No, I should have written that differently. It's five hundred contacts, so it could be duplicated. It could be uh several students would have more than one contact with us during the school year. Um, and I, and the primary reason for folks seeking our our services is mental health-related, um anxiety, uh, school refusal, um, parent conflict, things like that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Question, if if you were to give your best guess, how many students is that five hundred number ballpark?
Um. Probably a little under two hundred, you know, one sixty-five, one sixty.
Okay, thanks.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, so some of the training that we've provided within the community are suicide prevention related. The biggest one that we've been involved in, uh, the diversity, equity and inclusion programming is part of a multi-year collaborative endeavor funded by Middlesex United Way. And that is a grant that we used to receive that supported our Youth Action Council, which will be important for you to remember in a moment. Um, so now the money has come to support this training for twelve youth service bureaus. I think it's about thirty thousand dollars total. Um, they started with the director level, then we went to the staff level and tonight actually is the first uh student and youth training piece will be, which will be followed by three other sessions. Um, and then we also provide after-school activities. Um, we know that families want their children to be in safe, creative supervised settings. So we're involved in that as well. And some of the specialized certifications that our staff have received are Safe Sitter, Circle of Security, which is a parenting program, and Bootcamp for Dads, which is actually a new program that uh Adam Starr has been trained in. Next slide. And all of those I wanted to mention are um related to uh what we've learned in terms of what the community is looking for. So I think it's important for everyone to understand, we're doing programming and interventions that the community is calling for, not not just programming for programming sake. So some of the other, um, in terms of re-engaging and renewing our con- connections to people, community collaboration is a huge part of what we do. We're often kind of the um s- uh the center of a wheel that uh organizes and facilitates some of these programs. The fundraising dinner for S S K P, we we donated over two thousand dollars to them this year. Turkey distribution with the police department, that was almost two hundred families. Um, holiday giving was ninety families and approximately a hundred and fifty children uh in December. The Starlight Festival planning, which was um a nice way to bring the community together in early December. Um, it's our second Projects for Youth. Um, there's a class at the high school called English in Action and yearly we get calls from, I would say, anywhere from three to five students who want to do their capstone project with us, whether it's raising awareness around homelessness or food insecurity. And in fact, two of them just reached out to us today and I think that's a very important. And I think that's a very important part of fostering relationships with teens in the community. The Valley Shore Collaborative is a group of 35-plus agencies that have chosen to meet in Old Sabre, and Old Sabre has graciously allowed that to happen at the town hall. And how we benefit from that is being able to gather resource and referrals for our residents and to be able to make connections. When people need services, they often don't know how to navigate the system. And us developing relationships with all of those agencies really helps go a long way with that piece. The Election Day involvement, I know you recently heard from the registrars who are talking to you about aging. That seems to be a theme for us tonight. But this year, we organized a group of high school students. I think there were seven of us, seven students and three of us staff. We helped with the setup for Election Day and the breakdown. And I can tell you that I know from the look on their faces, it was really appreciated to have that help and assistance. And it was fun for the students to be able to get involved and learn more about the election process because everyone at the registrar's office was so interested in providing them with some education. The other part on the slide is prevention programming and positive youth development. It's a legislative mandate for youth service bureaus. So the E3 Peer Prevention Youth, we spoke at a state conference in October. They were invited as, there were only two youth groups invited to that, and ours was one. Very proud of that. And currently, as I mentioned, seven of them are at CATCA right now in DC. The youth were very involved locally and at the state level in the legislative process around legalization of recreational marijuana. They wanted to see how the system works and be able to voice their opinion. And we did have some debates internally because they have strong opinions about this, like everything else, though. The youth group facilitates discussions and health classes as well. We get calls from the high school to come all the time to talk about healthy relationships, critical decision-making, and socialization, for example. Next slide, please. Cost containment, we continue to collaborate with partner agencies, similar to the DEI grant I mentioned before, to identify and prioritize needs and reduce redundancies. With COVID happening and us being able to do so much on Zoom and hybrid, it's been great to share the programming that we do. We don't all, five towns have to be doing the same thing each week. One of us will do it, and people from other towns will come. And then we'll go to their town virtually to attend one of theirs. We're co-authoring some grant-funded projects at the moment, and we share in trainings and facilitation. There's only a few of us in each agency, in each YSB. So sharing our area of expertise has been really great. We did apply to ARPA for additional hours. Thank you for that, for specific staffing increase. And we continue to research additional funding streams. Next slide. Next slide, Larry. Oh, thanks. So we're applying for some prevention grants through, myself and another staff member will be taking the exam soon for Certified Prevention Specialist. And that will allow us to access some grants that previously we have not been able to because we didn't have that status. We're also, we've found an accountant who is going to help us with the 501(c)(3) application. Currently, it's tax season, so I won't be able to get back with him until the summer. But once Youth Action Council, if we can achieve the 501(c)(3) status, again, we'll be eligible for many, many grants for positive youth development that we cannot currently apply for. Next. So I wanted to share some pictures with you so I can bring this boring presentation to life a little bit for you, in case you recognize any of the students. But this was CAMPAZEN, a very important transition to high school program that, again, we've been doing since 2007. Next slide. E3 is our peer prevention group, and this was sticker shock, which is around November. We've been doing this since, I think, 2013. And on the right, they were involved in a color run. We've been taking them to meet other youth prevention groups from around the state so they can all get to know each other and share what they do. Next one. This was the conference in October called the CYSA, which is the Connecticut Youth Service Association Annual Meeting. And these are some of our student speakers. And on the right is where they went to a governor's prevention partnership conference. Next. And then during the summer and throughout the year, we take them on trips to different places. This one that you see, they went to Hammond Asset to do some community service. And we took them to Six Flags. We've also taken them on to Mystic to a mystery ghost tour. So small groups, we have two vans luckily, we can take up to 21 students at a time. And so in small groups, we're really kind of forming strong relationships with some of the students, which has really been very nice. Next one. Freshman orientation, this is where we involve the LINK students. So we had contact with every student in the ninth grade that day. I think only one student was missing. So our LINK students and our E3 students were the mentors for that process. And LINK does this, does the programming during the school year. And the nice thing about the connection with E3 and Yak is that we can connect with the students 24, you know, every month of the year. Even when school is out, we spend summertime with them as well. Next one. So in conclusion, you know, what we're always doing is continuing to improve efficiency of our operation. We switched over to electronic medical records last year, and that's been a great process. Working with our translation services and staff training. We'll work to enhance community relationships to increase mentor and financial supports for our positive youth development programming. And what that means is that the more volunteers and potentially, you know, adult mentors we can get, that helps take some of the, I'm not gonna call it burden, but the amount of work that the staffs in a while and offer their specialty or area of interest to students. It just takes, it takes a lot of time to form those relationships and maintain them locally for relevant programming direction. And that is it. Any questions?
Nice job, Heather.
Yeah, Heather, I agree with Brad. Nice job. Heather, a couple of years ago, there was a discussion about the involvement with social services and the police department going out on calls. And you and Sue both referenced it. How many calls a year do you guys go out? And is there an opportunity to increase that from your perspective?
Um, well, we haven't gone out with the police department. That is something that the chief and we were discussing at one point, based on a model of a program that they were doing in New London. I think that that's still worth discussing and looking into. But we just got back from a trip last week, and I did take two calls while I was away. And Sue, you probably take how many calls in a month? Can you unmute?
Yeah, just trying to unmute myself. So it really varies on the time of year. This time of year, we get more of them with homeless people outside, unsheltered, when it starts to get real cold or all this rain we've had. So I'm going to say probably two, three a month I get of phone calls. Not all of them need to be handled after hours or need my attendance. Sometimes it's a discussion I'm having with the police officer over services and things that we can or can't do. One time, I went to Walmart and bought, I'm just giving an example, bought a walker for somebody that needed that. And it was a call that they'd gone out on a welfare check. I didn't have to go to the person's house because they were already doing that. But I did go to Walmart, get the walker, bring it over there for them. So a lot of times, we work together in that way. I've met them up at the train station with, you know, a client that needed to get to a shelter, for instance, and that, you know, give information and that sort of thing. It doesn't always happen after hours. And when it does, oftentimes, that can also be handled with, over the phone and with the police onsite and with me adding the, you know, adjunct services that we do.
Thanks.
And predominantly, there's a mental health component to all. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Yeah.
You go ahead and finish, Heather.
I didn't hear that last question. Oh, I was just going to say that there's predominantly a mental health component to all of these calls. That's it.
Thank you very much, Heather. And Susan?
Thank you. Thank you.
Welcome to the other government agencies. Yeah, so we don't have to, you guys all have this. You don't have to spend a lot of time on it. You'll have it. We can continue to discuss it. And when we did want to present, not able to be here. Just page three. You know, you see cost containment. We talked about the two consensual positions. We did have a lot of retirements and resignations or payrolls in 2022, 21, 22, 23. And as you go, the budget overview on page four, the total general government budget right now is 2.79. I have been looking at it. We're going to discuss it at our next meeting, next February 14th, Valentine's Day, to make some recommendations as to some changes. I'm probably going to make fewer changes this year to the budget than I made in past years, but I do anticipate that 2.79 number to come down a little bit. Salary trends, we're showing a 2.42. Really well in the years on page six. We benefit expense trends very well, especially with health insurance, which is on page seven. You know, the amount of money we're spending in 2023 is, you know, like similar to what we were spending five years ago. So then we get to the actuary defined contribution on page eight. We all know what we did at that last year. We're not fully funding in the AC. You know, the pension board meeting, we had a pension board meeting last week. We have about the same number of people. So that, the defined contribution plan went into effect July 1, 2017. And five and a half years later, we have about the same number of people active in the defined benefit plan as the defined contribution plan. So, you know, you see the numbers different. So Leanne and I, this is something we both talked about. However, with that, on the defined benefit plan, the traditional pension plan, when you have retired, more people retiring, your cost will go up for the funding of the actual aerially defined contribution, right? You expect to have investment gain, sometimes not. But you have to make your contributions. We established a reserve for that in case we have to put in a larger contribution in any one year. But we can expect that number to go up, sometimes incremental, maybe sometimes not, depending on market forces. We have that plan looked at by our actuaries every two years to get a number to make some recommendations to us. So that's on the DB plan. As you get more people in the defined contribution plan, so now you have less people contributing to the defined benefit plan. So now you have people in the defined contribution plan, which is a 401(k) plan, essentially a 401(k). They must, as in the traditional pension, they must contribute 5%. The town will match 5%, just like the traditional pension plan. However, they can add 3%, and we will, we will match 3%. So it can be a 16% 401(k), essentially. Right now, we have 75% of the people in the DC plan opting for the higher contribution, which is good. It's good for them. It's, and our costs are fixed for the most part on that, you know, in a generation. So that is a little bit of the dynamics that go along with the DC and DB. Also, in the defined contribution plan, because it is very much tied to the employee, you'll see that reflected in the department budget. So that's why some of the individual department budgets have gone up, where you might see a new employee, someone came off the DB plan. Now they're in the DC plan. It's reflected in that department budget because we can tie a number to that employee. Whereas with the defined benefit plan, and Leanne will explain this better than I, it's more of a number based on rolling like five-year, you know, it's more of a number as to a target you need to hit periodically. Whereas the DC plan, it's a fixed number. We know what the number is.
Are they eligible for that immediately when they're hired?
So they're eligible for the defined contribution plan when they, yes, immediately.
So they can do it, they can absolutely write off?
Yeah. Now, they, if they leave, they don't get all our contributions within, they have to stay for certain periods of time. Yeah.
Carl, you said something about a new employee in the defined benefit plan. There's no police, there is no.
Only the police.
Right.
Only the police. And we have folks in the police department choosing the defined contribution plan because they can take it with them.
Right.
So not even all the police are choosing the DB plan. It's an option with the police department.
And a question on your financial investment group between the treasurer, Leanne, yourself.
Yep.
Are any of our benefits, are any of our investments making less than a 4% interest today?
Uh, sure. You're bound to have, so we have a, this is a longer answer than you want tonight.
It just came from my head.
Let me give you, let me give you the big, the big answer. We did an investment portfolio strategy study several years ago. We have about 10 areas that we invest in. Long-term bonds, short-term bonds, mid-cap, large-cap, small-cap, international, emerging market. Okay, so we have all of these. Not all of them are hitting on the same cycle all the time. International was a real lag for the last two years. International has accelerated a lot in the last six months. So, you know, right now, you might be lagging. I don't know what's lagging right now. A small cap is lagging, I think, maybe, you know. So the whole point of the portfolio is to achieve a total return and not have every one of your targeted funds achieve the perfect return.
So hopefully, our total portfolio could be hitting, you know, somewhere in a 7% somewhere.
Well, we are, our target is 6.75.
Okay.
It used to be 7.75, and we've lowered it. And we probably will be lowering it again over the course of the next year.
At one of the last one or two meetings, we were related that we're giving 4% interest on our interest.
Yeah, you're getting, we're getting more than that.
Yeah. That's good. That's just nothing specific, but in general, I wanted to hear that. Thank you.
Again, I would encourage you to come too. And you're more than welcome to get materials at our pension board meetings. They're super interesting meetings if you're interested in investments. So so you see the operational expenses on page nine up a little bit. The accounting department, we go into individual budgets.
On the accounting, why was the professional education one jumped up 1,500?
Oh, no.
And then the technical services, three grand?
And what?
The technical service, other technical services?
Yeah, I think the technical services are because our software system probably went up. As far as, what was the other one?
1,500 on professional education. 69.
I don't know exactly. Happy to get that answer from Leanne here, okay? That's her department that she oversees. The assessor, literally, there was an increase in the software, QDS. He went up a little bit. They use Vision, actually. Vision went up a little bit.
Was there a new employee up there also?
Where? Well, no, you still have Janet, Lou Parrish, Lou Parrishin, who's been there for a very long time, and Kristy, who was here last Saturday.
Yeah, she's the newest, right?
New-ish. I mean, she's here two years.
She has been two years.
Of course, so, yeah.
Okay.
We were, yeah, we're, you know, we've been very fortunate.
But she came in as an assistant finance director, right?
For the finance, LP went up. You guys know that. Building department is down. Tom McWhitney is now single, not a family. I have a loss in his family, the fire department.
Yeah, a question on that, Carol.
Which on what? On fire department.
Okay. They're increasing it by ten thousand dollars for, for maintenance, but they just got two engines and. What, they got two cheese cars? What, I mean, why would, I don't understand what the increase.
Uh, I, maybe it's for the other fire trucks, why don't we ask Joe, I'll ask Joe, and I'll get an answer for you.
All right.
Okay?
Yeah.
I'll do an email tomorrow, when he responds, I'll send it out to the board of finance. Okay?
Yeah.
So the difference between a salary custodian and a cleaning service. So we're still down sixteen thousand?
Uh, whatever.
Fire right column, far right, far right.
Yeah. Down eight thousand, it looks like.
Fire department.
Yeah, it looks like it's down eight thousand for the year over year.
It was a salary for the sodium minus thirty-six, and then cleaning service up twenty.
So sixteen different.
That makes it sixteen different.
The cleaning service is twenty thousand.
Right.
A year. It's not up twenty thousand.
Well, we didn't have a cleaning service prior to Wayne retiring, right?
Wayne was the cleaning service.
Right.
And he.
He was split between.
He was custodian, right?
Right.
Okay, so it's the custodian is down thirty-six, and then we brought a cleaning service in, which was still down sixteen.
Yes, uh, yes, yes, I would say, yep. Right?
Yeah, or stay for sixteen.
Right, so that's, that's what I was trying to.
That's great, and it'd be sixteen for the, uh, library as well, correct?
Uh.
Or was it cheaper?
Might even be more. It, it was all of that at the library.
Okay.
These are benefits might have even been over there.
Oh, and, okay.
I think the library had a bigger savings. So the fire marshal, uh, as Bruce and Brad now is making a vehicle request, you guys can deal with that, uh, maybe discuss it at one of your next meetings.
By the way, I did make a phone call, you can get them for forty-one.
Whoa.
If you go down that road.
Yeah, we're going down that road. Free cable vehicle repair, um, can you tell me what repairs were done for three thousand, you know, sixty-five thousand mile cars?
Uh, I can, but not off the top of my head.
Okay.
Um.
You will get to a part.
Yeah, uh.
I'm just really concerned, um, that vehicle goes back and forth to home. Lives twelve miles from home.
He does, he lives twelve miles from.
So he's got third, uh, he's got sixty-five thousand miles on the car, usually five and a half years, which is thirty-two thousand five hundred miles.
Is it that long? I, I don't think it's been, I don't think it was five.
Seventeen, two thousand seventeen.
I thought it was four years old that year, I'm not sure.
It's two thousand eighteen. It was purchased, I believe, in June of seventeen or July. What it was, it came in at the tail end of the previous fire. So out of the sixty-five thousand miles, thirty-two thousand five hundred are back and forth to home. And in a car, and different from a place car, there's several people driving it, this car's got one person driving it. Makes a big difference in a vehicle, he's not, I don't believe he's making a lot of chases and high speed and all that kind of stuff. So I believe that car. Should last. At least another four years.
So is this a five-year budget program plan that he's staying with, or could it be a seven-year vehicle?
Don't forget, years ago, they used to have a used police car, the dust one of the fleet. Either fire marshal's car, or the, um, civilian department's car. Then they graduated to the vehicles that they have now, the school keeps their vehicles ten years. So there's no reason why this vehicle shouldn't be kept for ten years.
A suggestion that, um. I recall at some point would be that perhaps that car stays in town. And, and when he's called into town, he comes to town, gets his car, and then goes to the job, and, and, and it is not a, uh, personal use vehicle.
Yeah, that, that, that's kind of hard to define or lead that up to somebody else, but, uh, I'm just more concerned about. It's got sixty-five thousand miles.
Yeah, my point is you won't have those miles.
Oh, absolutely.
You won't have, and, and. And you're not a first responder, so that was, that was my point.
Well, that's not, in, in all honesty, that's not actually true, um, he does come out, he has to be at sites. Within a certain amount of time to shut down or to, um, investigate and or get involved in, um. You know, the fire service on a regular basis between us, I mean, that, it does happen.
Yeah, he's available.
Yeah, he comes out quite a bit after hours.
He does, come out, he goes directly, he does.
Would he get another couple of years out of it? Yeah, probably, but, you know, the other thing you got to keep in mind is you, you know, you might have used that as a bargaining chip when you got. The quality of the person that you went after at that time too, I don't know, that, you know.
In terms of what?
Part of the negotiating when you brought him on, I don't, you know.
What, take-home vehicle?
Or? Yeah, or, yeah. Whatever that might have been, I don't know, wasn't pretty.
Before that car was, was.
Yeah, that car was here before him.
Uh, no, so he had a little one, because it could fit in.
It was higher, and then we got a new car.
Yeah, that's right.
It was not a negotiation.
And the take, the, look, the take-home, um, I became convinced, and I get the argument with take-homes, I became convinced that. He is a guy who at two A M. goes to a fire. And to have him come to the, the building official has a vehicle, it's not a take-home vehicle, and there's never been an issue. Although he did on Christmas Day, I have to go to Luigi's, or New Year's Day, whatever it was. But he just drove his own car there. Uh, but he doesn't go out, the fire marshal actually goes out pretty frequently after hours.
Um, well, I just, I just think you have to look at that, he's the only driver of the vehicle, and today the cars, I believe, go, can go two hundred thousand miles. From first to the place of five, like, five years to sixty-five thousand, if it's. Well, expecting only help from using old police crews.
I don't, I don't think it's unreasonable, but, uh, so there's, now there, the flip side of that argument, you know it well. Is sell this car while you can get some value, and if you can get into a new car for forty-one.
But that's a bad excuse.
Yeah, it, it may be.
Police could say, hey, we need new cars every year.
Yeah.
No, we're ready to get a better trade.
Come on.
No. It's a fire marshal.
Think that's suggestible?
Huh? You really want to?
No, I'm, I'm just saying that, that, that's, to me, is a weak excuse, if you got a good car, people.
So.
Did, did the fire marshal come and present to the Capitol, uh, group?
Yes.
Okay.
So also in his budget, he's asked for, uh, quite a big increase in, uh. The other professionals, so the deputy fire marshals. Um, I mean, honestly, based on actuals, I don't see a need for that, so. There will be some discussion around that in terms of the final budget, that's at seventeen thousand, that's seven hundred dollars, just so you guys know.
Doesn't he have inspectors right now?
He has, yes.
Inspectors, not part-time fire marshals.
Part-time fire marshals.
So they're part-time fire marshals, they have that title versus inspectors.
Yeah, they do, yeah, we've appointed them.
Okay.
Uh, and a lot of inspectors are actually certified for what it's worth. And I don't know if you, you want to just get an agreement with another town or one of those inspectors, based upon when they get called in, they get paid certain wages.
They're not easy to find these people.
What's that?
They're not easy to find these fire marshals, let me tell you, or building officials. There's a real shortage of this all over the state, um, some of these Z E Os, building officials. And fire marshals.
Okay, thank you.
So when, when you look at the land use budget, you know, th- this is, there's no changes, but go back to the fiscal twenty budget. And look at the current budget, and that. I mean, I, I say it every year, that's strictly re- reorganization. That's reorganization of positions and people. And I will argue that department is as efficient and well-run now as any department. In town hall, and certainly as was back in fiscal twenty. We talked about the registrar voters. There's no changes in the selectmen's budget. Uh, tax collectors budget, you're seeing, um, a new person on the defined contribute, actually two new people. On the defined contribution plan. Uh, the previous two work on the dot, defined benefit plan. So you're seeing that number in there. There were changes to the Hepburn Center, uh, two new employees, previous employees again on the town clerk, page twenty-two. Were in the D V plan, these are in the D C plan, so you're seeing some of those costly to the budget. So, look, the D C versus D V is not necessarily a budget savings. In theory, it's a generational, a generation from now, we will, will have fixed liabilities, we won't have these. Unknown costs based on market forces. So. You. What?
No, I'm jumping ahead of.
Go ahead.
For your town hall.
Yep, we're there.
Okay, forty thousand increase for maintenance, is that because of the H Mac issue?
Forty thousand dollar increase, it's a.
No, five thousand to forty thousand dollars.
It, it'll, um. I would leave that for now, I don't know that, I mean, that, that looked like it might have been an outlier, if you look at, if you look at past years.
Well, that's why I was kind of curious.
Yeah, I would, I would leave that where it is, um. And, um.
And the supplies jumping up? Is that based upon cost?
Yeah, um, I'm looking at that. I'll be honest with you, Leanne did this particular budget, so why don't we hold this budget, uh, Leanne, explain it. How's that?
It's a major supply.
Strictly for town hall, or does it encompass all the town, the town hall? Just town hall, yes.
Carl, reference to supplies, are we all buying the toilet paper together, and paper towels and all that stuff together?
Yeah. We are.
So you got her.
Get her paper from the board of ed.
Good.
Uh, Carol gets her trees, you get the toilet paper every year.
Uh, W P C, I see the treasurer.
No, go ahead.
W P C A, uh, what are you going to do with that old truck that's sitting out there at the train, uh, public works just rotten away?
What? I've been trying to get, I've been trying to get someone to move on getting it on gov deals and selling. What's going on with that, Larry?
Well, they're in some conditions, we've been waiting for the thing to get cleaned up so we could take good pictures of it, so, but yes, that, that's an active one, uh. Back when I was talking with Billy about the electrical stuff, he, he spoke to me about the, uh, getting that one posted. Because that one, he could, he'd get ready to go. So we should be.
What else do you got up there that you're going to get rid of?
I talked to Billy today.
It's going to clean out?
Yeah.
Good.
Okay, there's going to be a lot of stuff going on gov dot deals.
Good.
Yeah.
How many, uh, many excavators do we have, just one?
Yeah, so.
Just that W P C A.
Which came from the W P C A, right? And the truck we're talking about is the white, the W P C A truck?
One that got repainted, and yeah.
The insurance is mostly up because of, I'm on page twenty-eight, by the way, insurance is mostly up because of cyber. I think I've explained that to you before, um, we used to have full coverage through PERMA. That is now they couldn't offer it anymore, because it got too expensive. Um, waste collection is up a little bit, we, we haven't gotten. Notification from Connecticut Water, but they seem to go up two to two and a half percent every year. The one thing I love telling people when I'm at a party, because I'm the life of the party, I ask people. I, I tell people, guess how much it costs to keep water at the hydrants? And they go, fifty thousand, you know, I say, like, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And it goes up every year, every year.
And every year, the waste collection goes up and up and up too, I mean, why don't, why aren't we doing our own, saving thirty-six thousand?
Talking point. Talking point.
I, I'm not positive that. That could get done, uh, as efficiently as you think, you know, I, I wonder. In the summer, when those guys are mowing like crazy, I just wonder if the garbage is going to get empty.
Well, I mean, you got some guys with reduced hours of transfer station that could actually.
Guys with reduced hours.
I mean, don't have a full. Full complement in hours, you got a bunch of part-timers, right?
And then you change into benefits and everything.
I mean.
I'm not taking anyone from the transfer station, because that, that's.
Oh, okay.
I mean, they're busy, I, I, it's, actually, transfer stations looking good right now.
No, I was just thinking on one of the off days that they're closed, have one of the guys. Do that.
And if it's summer of the year. In the summer, it needs to be done, probably. A lot of.
Really? I'm just, yeah, I just, I remember when that was twelve thousand dollars. And it was not a big deal, now we're up at thirty-six.
And it's. It's a lot of garbage, I don't know that you can, like, so you have a barrel, so you go around and you do barrel, where are you dumping?
Well, they.
Into the back, which, masoned them?
I could go over with a suggestion to Billy or whoever you'd like me to, that there's actually a. A thing that goes on in an old chassis, I'd suggest that they keep one of the mason dumps, because I showed them where they could buy one on a, on a website. That would handle all that automatically and put it right in and compact it.
I mean, I just feel like we're in the sanitation business.
Well, no, but if you, you know, how many times you heard Ray sitting there saying, oh, I got to drop cans here, I got to put cans for that event and everything else? I don't know, I just. If you don't want to deal with it, you don't want to deal with it.
It's not that I don't want to deal with it, I just don't know that we have the manpower to do. That job well during the summer, that, that would be my concern.
Okay.
Uh, but. What?
On a regular basis.
So. That is something, let me, I'll bring it up with Bill and see if there's. Any way that he feels could be done. I'll mention it.
Carl, on the, um, engineering, we're flat at eighty, but we've thrown some extra money into, because there's going to be, you know, time to get ahead of some of the projects, are we. Going to, um, you know, do that again, or?
But wasn't it tied to the individual, uh, jobs you put the money in?
Yeah, um, so. Uh, is there, what page is that on?
This was on, on twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight.
It said budget one out of, just five of the agents.
Uh, engineer, right. So, yeah, um. What your, what's your question, Bruce?
Well, last year.
Yeah, we went over.
Yeah, because, and, and we wanted to, because we wanted to get ahead, wanted to get the engineering done, so we would be in effect shovel-ready for grant applications and those kinds of things. And, which I thought was a, you know, a good idea, so I just want to make sure that we've got enough money in the budget to be able to continue that forward.
You know, um. Probably not enough money in the budget to do the forward thinking, so probably enough money in the budget to do. The engineering, that we need to get done day to day. Maybe not enough for that. Um, because it seems like we're so freaking. We have so many things going on with between, with all the grant money and all the. And everything requires engine, everything requires engineering. But we do have that off-budget money that we put aside last year for some of the grant-related projects, so. With that, I'm hopeful that we can stay on budget.
Because, yeah, well, I just don't know whether, at this moment, you would want to tweak that up a little bit, just to give yourself some movement.
The answer is yes, but I don't want to increase the budget, because that, um.
I know, yeah, I think that's all purpose, why you put it in the other account.
Yeah.
That you started to accrue money in account for when, and if we need it, and we have a, a line management, we try to maintain.
Yeah, I don't want to be dishonest with the operations of the public, all right, I mean, you know, and, and I hear what you're saying, um. It could be up, it could definitely, I could throw twenty thousand more in that budget all day long, there's no doubt about it. No doubt, in my mind, um, fees, their fees have gone up too, their hourly rate, I'm sure has gone up, so.
Can you handle all the stuff you're throwing out?
Yeah, uh, look, they're busy, um, they're only a municipal engineering firm, Jacobson. Um, they do a lot of work for a lot of different towns.
And they're all getting the grants too, that's why I'm asking.
They're generally getting it done, um, I am. And this morning, I emailed Jeff. And Jeff, how we doing on the transfer station design? Because that has to go to inland wetlands, and I'm getting calls from people saying, where's the lead to take and take that? And quite frankly. I have a bunch of stuff.
A heap of life.
And I want, and, you know, so I emailed him just this morning on that, um, because I want to get to inland wetlands. And that is for the entire transfer station redesign, just to get it approved once and once only.
We might have to do a permit mod too, by the way. I was just thinking about that, a permit mod.
Why?
Because your layout and everything was pre-approved when you went, when you got your permit originally.
Yeah.
I got to ask.
Yeah, well, they, 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 they know all about it, they would ask, but you don't want to walk into it.
Yeah, that's right.
Um, and then on the political subdivisions, uh, one thing that's added this year. Uh. All, uh, I want to say maybe seven or eight towns are putting in five thousand dollars each. For the pump-out boat on the river.
What the quote, what's the like?
Yes.
Yes.
And that boat.
It is busy.
Serves a hell of a purpose, um. You know, so people are dumping their tanks in Hamburg Cove and. In the river. Yeah. So, um, sometimes you wonder why that swimming water is so warm in Hamburg Cove, and you're like. From our retiring, uh, um. Under sixty-five, so those are some of the folks who, uh. Are fall under an old contract where they get insurance up to the age of sixty-five and individual, uh, and then. Uh, and then they go on Medicare. Um, so Lee Anne has, um, laid that out for you. It's still a very reasonable number, uh, that we have there.
Um, how many employees would that result?
How many employees?
There's. How many does that cover?
Which one?
The, uh, over sixty-five, the Chicago over sixty-five.
Well, that's a, that's basically a Medicare Advantage Plan, um. A lot, probably eighty to a hundred, I'd imagine, right? I mean, it's.
Okay.
That isn't like, you know, we're not doing primary health insurance.
No, 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 no.
It's a supplemental plan.
Carl, can I jump in on the health insurance issue?
Who's that?
Um, this is Sue. Yeah, I wanted to jump in on that. I noticed how much money I saved the town when I got off of medical that the town was supplying. And got on Medicare. It did not save me money, it saved the town money. I did it anyway, because one of these days I'm gonna be retired, not apparently soon because of the economy, but. In, in preparation for that, I wanted to be prepared. Um, what I wanted to say about that is. The incentive to get off is one thousand dollars payable, um, at, in two five hundred dollar amounts. That in no way incentivized me to get off of the town insurance.
Right.
And, and yet your savings was about sixteen thousand. So I'm saying, a- and as a worker gets older, that insurance amount, you know what I mean, that's high. So I'm wondering if you guys might want to take a look at, could you put a better incentive in there to get people off the town insurance? Because it would save you way more thousands of dollars.
No, it wouldn't. Uh, that, it's actually not the case, uh. So, when you, when you have an employee, I, this has been negotiated down, actually. It used to be one-third of the cost of the plan. So people are getting eight thousand dollars to not take the town's plan. You're not gonna incent someone not to take health insurance, you're just not. If they need the health insurance, they're gonna take the town and that is straight, you know, we got that advice from our broker. Negotiate that down. If people are gonna be on your health insurance plan, they're gonna be on your health insurance plan. You're not going to incentivize them by saying, here's seven thousand dollars, go buy a twenty-five thousand dollar plan. Or, or they have coverage through a spouse and you're just giving them money because they're gonna get coverage through their spouse anyway. So, uh.
Well, that's true, but my thought was.
In your case, it's Medicare. In your case, it's different, I get it.
Okay. Well, I was just thinking that, you know, I picked up a Medigap policy and it was two oh six. Through, it was two ten now, it was two oh six through, you know, um, AARP. So, what I was thinking was, you know, to incentivize someone. If I was inclined to not, to not want to just do this anyway. Cause there was really no incentive there whatsoever, but if it was equaling, like, maybe the Medigap policy. I'm not talking about seven thousand, eight thousand, I'm just talking about maybe increasing the incentive to about two thousand. And maybe that would actually, there might be somebody who would bite at that. I don't know.
I'm going to disagree, so.
Okay, well, just a thought, because I know it worked in my case.
I, I hear you.
Save a bunch of money.
So anyway, that's it, that's, uh, and I just wanted to run through that. Boy, you're remote, can you go?
Hey Carl, this is Eric, I have a quick question. Is Jeff Gibson the same, is it his engineering firm that's gonna be doing the Main Street project as well?
Yes.
And then, second question. We did not talk about Public Works tonight, they've already been in. The interim director, though, per contract is being paid as a director currently, is that accurate?
That is correct.
Okay. Are we still paying the director as well?
That's correct.
Okay.
So, uh, in the con- in the contract, it says if, um. Any employee works in the director's position. For more than four days. So up to four days, they, they retain their old pay. Once they take over the position for more than four days, they assume the director's paying.
You're doing the job anyway.
Yeah, and we had a situation years ago. Where we had an employee who was out for months and months and months and basically the assistant took over. And was not getting paid appropriately. The union brought that up at the negotiations and they're right. And, uh, it's, so we agreed to that, so. Uh, and, uh, yes, so that's the situation.
I, I agree with it, I just wanted to clarify that. Do we know how long we may be paying two directors for?
Um, at least another month. That's all I know. Uh, so I don't mean to be, um. Circumspective or act like I know something that you don't. I don't know anything that you guys don't know, other than there's another court date, like on February twenty-eighth. That's all I know. I don't know anything else about that. Um, and I'm hopeful that it will come to a conclusion at that time.
Thank you.
What emotional? Anything else, I don't mean to. You got that? First, second. Done.